This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJ SA 10:4-6 et cetera, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star-Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Here.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, you can tell by the crowd we have a lot going on tonight. We have some proclamations and some presentations. We're gonna start with Women's History Month, alright? And that proclamation will be given by Councilwoman Stephanie Von Rudenberg.
You can go down there.
You can go down there. No, nobody has to come in.
Thank you.
Okay.
Proclamation Office of the Mayor of the City of Hackensack, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthrop-
Philanthropic.
-philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all, and whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore be it resolved that in the year 2018, the City of Hackensack commemorates March as Women's History Month, presented the 13th day of March 2018.
Okay, very good. Now our Deputy Mayor, Kathy Canestrino, is going to do the proclamation for the Girl Scouts.
If I could have the leaders of Girl Scout Troop 95592 come up to join me, if any of them are here.
First of all, let me say how appropriate for Women's History Month to have our future women leaders here standing right in front of us. On a personal level, I can't say enough about Girl Scouting and what it does for our fine young woman, and how it instills so many principles that will guide you through the rest of your life. May you girls always remember these wonderful moments and use these principles throughout your life, because they're very important. Alright, now for the proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Hackensack. Whereas the Girl Scout Junior Bronze Award is the highest honor a Girl Scout can achieve. Working on a project to earn the bronze award helps develop confidence, helps you meet new people, and have the kind of fun that happens when you work to make a difference. And whereas Girl Scout Troop 95592 Hackensack Juniors began by completing a leadership journey to become Agents of Change, learning about the power of one, the power of team, and the power of community, and completing a service project during Childhood Cancer Awareness Month helped the troop to see themselves as leaders. And whereas the Girl Scouts brainstormed ways that they could make a difference, and chose a cause close to their hearts, forming a team called Comets for Kaia to provide support for Kaia in her battle with leukemia. And whereas the girls raised awareness about cancer at local recreation events by distributing wristbands, and they participated in a walk-run event. The team had Comets for Kaia shirts printed, and a generous member of the Hackensack community purchased shirts for the entire third grade class to wear in support. And whereas the team organized and ran trolls and Star Wars movie nights, they collected donations of new and fun pajamas, slippers, and bandanas, as well as Star Wars toys, clothing, and books. The donations were given to tomorrow's Children's Fund for their delivery to the children being treated at Hackensack University Medical Center. And now therefore I, Kathleen Canestrino, Deputy Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with the mayor and other members of the city council, do hereby congratulate Girl Scout Troop 95592 for their contributions to the community. Now, for each of our Girl Scouts, again, achieving this bronze award is a real lofty achievement for each one of these fine young ladies. So I'd like to call them by name and give them a certificate to honor their very hard work. Alright, first could I have Leila Brunston? You've got many things to give. Next can I call Kaia Carroll? Next can I call Marley Dibb? Next can I call Arlene Landron? We have Bethany Nunes? Gabriella Tavares? Julia Thompson? And last but not least, Camille Whiting? Now can I have a big round of applause for these fine young women? Keys, everybody!
Oh, you should say thin mince.
That's right, thin mince! It's mince! Cookie season! That's right, where's the cookies? We should've had cookies tonight.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, girls! Congratulations, girls! You're welcome.
We have a ways to go, folks, so bear with us, this is all good stuff, though. I do have another proclamation. This is also Youth Art Month in the City of Hackensack, and we've always celebrated this, and I always give this proclamation officially at an event that's held, but this time we're gonna read it here on a date that's listed on it, as well as Thursday night at 6 o'clock, I believe, at the New Cultural Arts Center. I urge you all to stop down and see what our young artists have done. The lower level of the art center is our gallery, and it's a beautiful spot, and all their artwork has been down there for the last week or two, and it'll stay down there for another couple weeks for everybody to go look at. It's a beautiful gallery, but Thursday night is the event honoring them. The council will be there, along with others, and we will be honoring all these students, and I'll read this proclamation again there. But I'd like to read it tonight officially, and it reads, "Whereas art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary, middle, and secondary students, including the following: Whereas art education develops students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities; and whereas art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities; and whereas art education gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs; and whereas art education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects; and whereas art education interrelates student learning in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics; and whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experiences in all students' education." Now therefore I, John P. LaBrosse, Junior Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with the members of the city council, do hereby endorse the observance of Youth Art Month and encourage the support of quality art programs for our childrens in our schools. Okay, thank you. And I urge you all to come Thursday night for that. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy Mayor Sims, and we're gonna do the girls' basketball team first, I believe? Okay. It's been a busy month here in Hackensack between all the awards in sports and scouting and everything else. It's a good thing.
On behalf of Dave Petrella, who's down in Atlantic City and can't be here, he wants to congratulate both boys and girls' basketball team on their accomplishments. Being March is National Women's History is nothing like congratulating this year's 2017-18 Lady Commits Basketball Team for being the first team in Hackensack High School history to make it to the state championship finals. I wanna start by calling their coach, head coach, Michelle Hammond-Dutley. Isn't that a pretty sweatshirt she has on?
Congratulations.
Next, we're gonna bring up here, first of all, I wanted to say, congratulations, young ladies. I've been with the program for six years, and this is my first year as the head coach, and I truly appreciate everything from the young ladies, what we've done, and where we're still going to take you to. So again, thank you. My coaching staff, it was phenomenal. We were all new to this, all positions, and I truly love you all from the bottom of my heart. My assistant head coach, I would not have never done it, always with a good right-hand man, Coach Eddie Hodge.
How you doing, sir?
Congratulations, had a great season.
Next, next, and always, I was always taught to bring back your own home player who played for Lady Commits. I can't remember the years, but she's a former Lady Commit, thousand-point scorer more, assistant coach Jackie Walsh.
Great job, Coach.
And if anyone knows how I am, I am the politic young lady. I'm never gonna forget about our sending districts. We always have to have someone home with us, too. From our sending districts, assistant coach Jamie Swizer. She's from Maywood, public school system. Okay, now, ladies, listen for your name, if you can please come forward. Oh, I love you! You can never do this neither, you always have to have another young lady by your hand. I can send emails, text messages. Last message, please get this out, Kiara Gatrell. She was my manager, team manager. She's trying to start a rowing club at Hackensack High School, just if anyone wants to know.
What's up, neighbor?
Congratulations.
Trinity Brown, is she here? Trinity? No. Trey Taylor? We always need someone keeping our film. Alright ladies, I'm coming. Sam Eng, graduating senior, class of 2018. Yeah! Brittina Bully? Bully! Deja Christmas? Kiara Cowan? Kiara has made first team all-league and third team all-county for Girls Hackensack. Ooh, cute. Paige Tonkis? Emma Maroon? Bianca Myrie? Graduating senior, class of 2018. Paige Neal? Natalie Patterson? Ayana Stone? Lyric Reyes? Kaylee Galaback?
Stand up.
Next, I wanna call Javon Quinley. I have a proclamation for Javon that reads this. Whereas Javon Quinley, a high school basketball star from Hackensack, has been awarded the Gatorade New Jersey Boys High School Player of the Year for the second year in a row. The award recognizes athletes' excellence along with academic achievements and character. And whereas Javon Quinley also has been awarded the Prestige McDonald's All-American Hometown Hero. And whereas Javon Quinley currently plays as a point guard for Hudson Catholic High School in Jersey City, but grew up playing in Hackensack Junior Basketball Recreation League, where he was coached by yours truly, Hackensack Deputy Mayor Dave Sims. And whereas Javon Quinley is a four-time county champ and a one-time state sectional champ, whereas Javon Quinley will be attending Villanova University in the fall, where he will play college basketball for the Villanova Wildcats. And whereas Javon Quinley is also a student athlete and is a member of the National Honor Society and a historian volunteer giving back to the community, now therefore I, John P. LaBrosse, Junior, Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with the members of the Hackensack City Council, dare hereby honor Javon Quinley for his achievements and academic accomplishments. Also, on behalf of Hackensack Junior Basketball, Javon Quinley is entered into our Hall of Fame, and we're giving him recognition as a thousand-point scorer. Okay, the next group, what can I say? The boys' basketball team once again has carried the city through March Madness by winning the Christmas Tournament, the Freedom Division, and state sectional champs. Let me start by calling Aaron Taylor, head coach.
I just wanted to thank the city for this recognition, Deputy Mayor Sims, and the rest of the city council. Wanted to also thank the team, the players, for all their hard work and their dedication, and call up their names. We also wanted to, before we call the players, wanted to thank the coaching staff. We have Basil Saliba here. As Coach Michelle mentioned, we like to bring back former players and graduates of the high school. What's unique about Coach Saliba is that him and his son would be the first group, first father-son combination to win the state sectional championship. Then we also, who's not here, Coach Scott, Coach Kurt Scott, Coach Frank Stith, and Coach Jelani Carter. Number one comic, Anthony Tyre. This is their first assistant. Player Cameron Williams. Kevin Mattel. Amir Walker. Jelani Baden-Carter, Junior. Seth Sharif Brown. All the players that are standing up here are underclassmen, so they'll all be back for at least one more year. Senior Torrin Porti. Senior BJ Saliba. And what's unique about this senior group, Torrin and BJ, they are the first players in our boys' basketball program to win multiple state sectional titles.
Also, Hackensack Junior Basketball wants to recognize BJ Saliba. We entered him into our Basketball Hall of Fame and a thousand-point scorer. Also, along with Javon and BJ, one of their running mates, Ateba Taylor, who couldn't be here. We also entered him into the Hall of Fame and a thousand-point scorer. Taking his trophy will be Aaron Taylor on his behalf. Who's also attending Youngstown State in the fall on the Division One Scholarship. Let's have a hand for the young man.
Okay, normally I leave all the public comments to the end of the meeting, but since we have such a large grouping here tonight, we've honored so many different people. I'd like to have a motion to open it to the public, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. At this time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak on anything relating to what we've just witnessed here tonight with all these wonderful awards and accolades that have gone to these young people, please come forward. I'm going to try to keep it down to about a minute, since there's so many people here, but feel free to come up. Sir?
Keep it less, Mayor. I'm Mark Stein. I'm on the Board of Education in town. I'm here with Jason Nunamaker, and Leila, and Tim Hoffman. And we're just here, we're so proud of our boys' and girls' teams for what they've accomplished this year. It's been a thrill attending all their games, and we're just very proud of them as a Board of Education. So, we congratulate them.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, students, parents. I want to say congratulations. My name is Carlos Velez, and I am running for Board of Education. I want to say thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your commitment to excellence, because you guys make us here, parents, proud. Thank you.
Okay, any students want to come up? The Girl Scouts, anybody still here? All right. Here we go. I knew Mrs. Whiting would be brave enough to get up here. She's never shy.
Good evening. My name is Joy Dorsey Whiting. I am the principal at Fannie Meyer Hiller School, but I'm here in the capacity of a proud parent of our Girl Scout troop. And I just wanted to say that our girls wouldn't be as successful without the hard work of our leaders. Mrs. Thompson and Mrs. Diggs work so diligently with our girls. They give of their time, their energy, and their love. And so, on behalf of the parents, many of us here, we just want to thank you for all that you do for our girls.
I have a few words. The city of Hackensack is so important to me and my family. I have deep roots in Hackensack, and I think that's why this honor is extra special to me. One of my greatest idols, my great-grandfather Carl E. Padivano, was once the superintendent of Hackensack Schools and was a man of outstanding courage, strength, and character. It is such an honor to stand here before you as you honor me and the rest of the Hackensack teams when I should be honoring you and everyone in the city. That makes it a wonderful place for families, athletics, and most importantly, academics. My brothers and I have had some of the same teachers at Fairmount School, and I wouldn't change that for the world. Some of my all-time favorites are from Fairmount, and they've helped me to shape me into this student today. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to speak about tonight's festivities? Because I think the council might like to say a few words as well. I need a motion to close to the public. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Councilwoman?
Good evening. It's just such an honor to see all of these wonderful accomplishments. You have so many different groups here tonight, and it just shows you what a wonderful city that we are made of. You have athletics, you have Girl Scouts, you have women, you know, men. It's just such a nice combination of people, and it makes me so proud to sit up here and serve this city, because looking out there, it's just, you know, so many smiling, happy faces that, you know, deserve the recognition for your hard work. And I want to thank you guys for, you know, putting the time in to coach our youth and to mentor our youth. It's so important to have these programs in place for all the young children in our city. And without the hard work of the students and the athletes, you know, we wouldn't be who we are today. So, thank you to the coaches, the leaders, and of course, all the students and athletes that are here tonight. Congratulations.
I know we had the women's and the men's team here tonight, even though it's Women's History Month. I guess as a woman, I'm equally proud to see that we had two women's events tonight to one man's event. So, not putting down the men, but come on, go girl power, especially those Girl Scouts. Just echoing what Councilwoman Von Rudenberg said, we're all so proud of all of you. I mean, it shows on each and every one of your faces as you walked up here how proud you are of yourselves, and you deserve it. So, every one of you, give yourselves a hand right now.
Dave?
I'm so proud of the girls' basketball program. In this town, the women in the younger division are the forgotten souls, and I'm glad I had most of these girls in Hackensack Junior Basketball. This year's Hackensack Junior Basketball lady comments. When you guys finish, I'm having a fundraiser at Hoolahands on Route 17. Please go out and eat and support after you leave here. To the boys, congratulations. I'm with most of you every day. Last night, the boys and the girls, we ate together as family, and we are all winners. Javon, you will always have a place in our hearts. Thank you.
First of all, congratulations again to the boys and girls. And now, people can understand what is the reason I am fighting to try to improve our sport facilities, and that's the only way our kids can stay inside there away from any problem. And sometimes, you don't believe, but if we continue doing what we are doing right now, coaches, parents, we can develop our kids not only to be good in sports, but to try to be a good citizen. They can get a scholarship and get a good education. That's the only thing we are trying to do here. To try to improve all the way around our city, and that way, we have a beautiful city. That's my object. Thank you.
You know, there's an old saying, "It takes a village." Well, here's our village. This is wonderful. I've long time been an advocate of anything that helps our children, whether it's scouting, whether it's art clubs, whether it's sports. I've always said that sports and other activities for children are our best form of crime prevention, without a doubt. You have a man here tonight, Mr. Demetrius Carroll, who I was lucky enough to know, and he was a student athlete in Hackensack. He was a great student athlete. He's also Kaya's dad, by the way. He's now here protecting everybody in this room. But he'll be the first one to tell you that these programs are what turn out successful children. Along with their education and their schooling, it's a necessity to have these programs for our children. And I'm so happy to see everybody in this room tonight. I don't care if we stayed here till two o'clock in the morning to get this done. It's so important to have it done. And so proud of everybody here. Proud of the boys winning that state section for the second time in three years. So proud of the girls' basketball team making it to the sectional finals for the first time ever in common history. And that's a long history, folks. It goes back a long ways. The Girl Scouts who were here receiving their bronze awards. Kudos to you guys. I know how much hard work it takes. And let's give it up for the women. You know, it's... We wouldn't, as men, we wouldn't be here without them. I celebrated my 40th wedding anniversary yesterday, and I can honestly say I would not be who I am or where I am without my wife. Absolutely. And I sure remind me of that quite often, but... Somebody told me something great, you know, that men should always have the last word, and it should be, "Yes, ma'am." Anyway, thank you all for coming. It's been a wonderful night. I'm so happy that everybody was able to make it tonight. I know some of the student athletes were in here, but we'll make sure they get their proclamations. I want to thank Councilman Deputy Mayor Dave Sims for helping out with that. He funded and participated in that dinner last night at Churapon Restaurant, which had all of the basketball teams there. That was a nice event. And looking forward to doing more good things in Hackensack. This is great stuff. So, we're going to take a five-minute recess, because I mean, you guys all don't want to stay for a whole council meeting. You've got better things to do. So, we'll take five minutes, but thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home. Thank you. All right. Now, we're down to business. So, we'll go right into resolution... I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes for the regular and count meeting of February 13th. I need a motion, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Leo.
Leo.
Are you voting?
Minutes.
Aye. Say aye.
Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Thank you, Leo. All right, we're going to go right to the city manager's report.
Good evening. City manager's report for March 13th. One, I'd like to congratulate all award winners tonight. I don't think anybody, unless you're a parent, understands the importance of these youth groups and the support structure that this offers these kids. And then you see them become basketball stars and, you know, everything under the gamut. It's an important thing. And I really applaud the people that are so committed in this town. I've only been here a short period of time, but I'm always impressed. First is, I'd like to commend our DPW and sanitation crew for a job well done in our last past snowstorm. I've received many compliments. I think that the DPW is really stepping up and taking care of business. And I see a more concerted effort to address the complaints and conditions in the city, and I'm proud of the service that we're getting from these folks. And I think that we need to continue to support them with the equipment and the tools to provide the service to the city, but I think we're on the right track. Our recreation department is preparing to host the annual Easter egg hunt on March 28th. It'll be at Johnson Park Turf Field. Flyers with the new details have been distributed and are available on our website. Third thing I have is potholes. Telephone number to call them in, 201-646-5058. If you see a pothole needs to be repaired, please report it to us. We'll get it repaired. Unfortunately, we were doing really well on potholes until we had a snowstorm, which stops us from doing that, so now we go back to snow operation, or I should say, winter operation. But we will commence back on potholes. We're also going to use the same process. We hired an outside contractor to help us with the many potholes we have to address. That would complete the city manager's report. I'm glad I was able to cut this meeting short on my part, because I think that, as the mayor echoed, all the people who received awards and accolades tonight were so deserved, and that was the important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Resolution 97-18.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 41-2017, a bond ordinance amending bond ordinance number 13-2016, finally adopted by the city council of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey on April 4th, 2016, to increase the appropriation therein for items or expenses listed in and permitted under NJSA 40A:2-20 by an amount equal to $500,000. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, and the public hearing was held on December 18th, 2017. We will need a motion first to remove it from the table if you're going to vote on it. If not...
No, we're going to keep it tabled.
We're going to keep it tabled.
Yep. So, move right to 98-18. Sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure. This is a resolution for the adoption, for the final adoption, of ordinance number 7-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 112 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Noise to adopt a noise control ordinance based upon the model ordinance prepared by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection pursuant to the New Jersey Noise Control Act. Now, we had to send this to the state?
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly comment on this. You're going to need to move to table this, because we made that one change regarding the Sunday construction work. We needed to send that to the DEP for approval. We are awaiting that approval, so we cannot proceed to final adoption until it's received.
So, onward to 99.
We need to motion, move to table.
Okay, motion to table, I'm sorry.
Offer. Second.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Okay, Resolution 99-18.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 8-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to delete time-limit parking on certain sections of Summit Avenue that are instead being established as resident parking. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law. Now calls for a public hearing.
I have a motion to open to the public, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, I need a motion to close.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion.
Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen, and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 8-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 100-18.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 9-2018, a bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of two garbage trucks and improvements to the Main Street streetscape by and in the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, appropriating $800,000 therefor and authorizing the issuance of $761,800 in bonds or notes of the city of Hackensack to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law. Now calls for... This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, I need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody who wishes?
Need a motion to adopt? I'm sorry. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on ordinance or adoption 100-18, please come forward. Seeing no one, motion to close to the public.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Now, we need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the ordinance, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen, and state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 9-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 101-18.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 10-2018, an ordinance authorizing a 30-year tax exemption for a market rate rental apartment project with retail and parking to be constructed by R&amp;H Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law NJSA 40A:20-1 et cetera. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen, and state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 10-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 102-18.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 11-2018, an ordinance authorizing long-term parking lease agreement with designated redeveloped block 308.01 lot 3, otherwise known as lot C, for 200 public parking spaces. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law, now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk, please.
It's Goldie Prospect Ave.
Thank you.
I just have two questions on this ordinance. This was a 500-spot parking lot.
Right.
Why didn't we just sell him 300? And I assume if we're going to lease 200, we're going to pay the guy money to lease what we already owned.
No, well, that's not exactly how it works, but in order for the project to work, he needed the whole lot. We decided our average usage on that lot, do a study, was about 200 spots, which was sufficient for the area that'll still take care of the Ice House and Boulder City and some other lease spots that we leased in there, I believe. How many other spots are up there?
Well, I mean, right now, we're getting the 200 spots.
Right, we get 200 spots basically for free.
And theirs meets their need for the building.
Right. The word lease is, has nothing to do with what we're paying. Basically, they're supplying us with 200 parking spots.
They're building the garage.
They're building a garage. This will be inside, protected, out of the elements. So, when you go to the Ice House, now you...
I never hear a lease, I always assume that we're paying.
Yeah.
And we will, we will receive all the revenue.
We receive all the revenue from the spots.
That's even better.
So, yeah.
Plus, by, Chris, by having the whole lot converted over, it becomes taxable.
No, no, that part I understood.
That was zero taxes there.
It just, the lease, the lease was like contradictory to you.
Yeah, the leases.
You make your mind up, saying, why sell it then?
Right.
It's a small lease compared to the revenue.
Right. Okay, anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close.
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen, and state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 11-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 103-18.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds for duplicate payments, tax exempt, and state for judgments.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council, may I go with ayes for the rest of this? Or do you want individual roll calls?
For any of the remaining, I mean...
Resolutions.
They're just resolutions.
I would suggest everybody take a look at the agenda, and if there's anything that wishes to be told, then...
No, but I'm, individually, I'm just curious to make sure we...
He wants to know if you can go with a...
A general consensus, ayes, or do you want an individual roll call with the council?
From, that's what I'm saying, is I think everybody needs to look, you know, and make sure that there's not going to be any concern that you would need...
Not a problem.
Anyone want to speak on any individual resolution, if anybody does.
Right.
Even not to vote, but either to comment on or to vote on, I would suggest taking an opportunity and do that.
Normally, on a normal night, we do it the old way. We're just trying to streamline tonight.
I just don't want a member of the council to feel pressured if they feel there's one they want to speak about and not have a chance to say that.
Anybody has a chance to disagree or speak up?
We don't want that to be on 12 o'clock.
Okay. So, we're still on 103?
We're, well, that one was done, we're up to resolution 104.
Okay, resolution 104.
104-18 is a resolution for the Main Street Business Alliance Inc. 2018 budget.
I need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, resolution 105-18.
This is a resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriation prior to the adoption of the budget per NJSA 40A:4-20.
Okay, I need a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 106-18.
This is a resolution authorizing the award of national co-op contract for the purchase of a heavy-duty rescue vehicle for the fire department in the amount of $544,860.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 107-18.
This is a resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $71,398.43 to Dominic Giartana for the Department of DPW.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 108-18.
This is a resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $21,540.82 to Overton Mayo from the Department of Public Works.
Have a motion, please.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 109-18.
A resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $43,799.90 to Police Sergeant Sarah Melvazia.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call? I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 110-18.
A resolution to correct resolution 53-18 amount of accrued time payout to Police Officer Alberto Gutierrez in the amount of $105,416.7.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm going to stop right there. I have a question about the city manager and the city attorney on these payouts. We just paid out one, two, three, four different people, okay? Which I believe all these people are entitled to their money?
Correct.
By law, we have to pay these people. These are agreements and contracts from years past with the, with these individuals?
Every one of these individuals are retirees that work for the city. In their contractual agreements, they provided for a payout for their accrued time for sick and vacation. All these people exceed 25 years. Once they have that contractually, they're, we're obligated to basically buy them out of the accrued time that they saved during that period of time, and these obviously represent what the city owes these people per contractual agreement.
Okay. And if we were to try not to pay them, what would happen?
We'd be sued.
Okay. Thank you. Resolution 111-18.
Not a trick question.
This is a resolution authorizing the reduction of the 2017 tax levy by tax appeal judgments.
Motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 112-18.
This is a resolution authorizing the city of Hackensack to enter into a grant agreement with county of Bergen for a fiscal year 2017 community development block grant, otherwise known as the CBBG award.
Need a motion, please?
All over.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 113-18.
This is a resolution determining the form and other details of the offering of $39,867,000 general obligation bond series 2018 of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, otherwise known as the city, consisting of $22,677,000 general improvement bonds series 2018, and $17,190,000 refunding bonds series 2018, and providing for their sale and determining certain other matters with respect thereto.
Okay, before we vote on this, I'm going to, I'll let the deputy mayor speak to this, what these, exactly, these are. These were explained during the council session earlier tonight, but we have new people here, and I think we need to explain, because there's some big numbers there, obviously.
Basically, I'll talk about that and the resolution after it, because it's a similar in nature. What we're doing is, we're, this is a financial decision based on the advice of our financial advisors and our CFO, where we have notes that it makes more sense financially to consolidate them at this point while the rates are good, and consolidate those notes into bonds. So, that's what both of these are about. The $39 million, of that $39 million, $11 million of that is new monies that are being added to that. The remainder of that are existing notes that are being converted, and that is a term of, I wrote it down.
One is four, in other words.
18 years.
18 years.
18 is four.
That's, that's a 19-year term. The second one, for $22 million, you've heard us speak many times about the bonding for the tax appeals, where we were constrained to seven-year bonds by the local finance board. So, that is the combination of the remainder of monies that is owed on those three independent tax appeal bonds, plus there was a $3 million settlement last year that was awarded, and that includes that as well. So, the term of that will only be four years, because that's the length that is prescribed by the DCA.
That was for the 17, 17 million, right?
For the 22.
I thought that was for the 17, I thought this was that, okay.
Right, right. And, no, they're two separate ones. And the good news for the public is, by doing this financially and doing it in the way that we've done, we have incorporated $11 million of new proposed monies, and both of these in combination will not see any tax increase to the budget or to the citizens of the town. So, this is basically a zero-sum game. We're consolidating, and you're not going to see any change to the taxes based on either of these items. And they probably, you won't see them hit the budget till 2019, it won't be an issue.
Okay. Need a motion for this one?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 114-18.
This is a resolution providing for the combination of certain issues of general improvement bond series 2018 of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, into a single issue of bonds aggregating $22,677,000 in principal amount.
Okay, need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 115-18, the payment of bills.
Resolution authorizing payment of bills. Need a motion?
Need a motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Only two items on the consent agenda. Does anybody up here have an issue with anything on the consent agenda?
No.
Seeing none, please read the consent agenda as...
The following items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any item requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and or additions. The consent agenda consists of Resolution 116-18 through 117-18. 116-18, a resolution authorizing refund of Avier Deontay, CPO Property Manager, Servelli Real Estate and Property Management for unused escrow fees in the amount of $823.75 for 75 Union Street. Resolution 117-18 is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack's participation in the Cranford Police Cooperative Pricing System.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Record time.
Cut a little bit off with the "all in favor" one, John. Okay, we're gonna go right into, need a motion open to the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Potaglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Thank you. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak? Now is your time. Please come forward. You have three minutes.
Much less. Larry Isen, Mapleville Drive. What is the Cranford Police Cooperative Pricing System?
Go ahead, Tan.
It's, good.
Or, either one.
It's the ability for the city to join a co-op where we get cooperative pricing for goods and services that, and we don't have to pay the additional and we don't have to go out to bid. It streamlines the process for the city. In reality, we save money.
So it was, but it was originated by Cranford and the other people who joined in?
They basically, right. So they're the, um...
They're the lead agency on it. And I spoke to somebody in Cranford. My understanding is approximately 300 New Jersey municipalities are members of this. So it's a pretty, pretty substantial-sized co-op.
Saving money.
Thank you, sir.
Next, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Guess we do nods now. Okay. All right. I just want to make a correction. I saw the last city meeting. I wasn't here. A young man got up and spoke about the senior luncheon. I just want everyone to be clear that that was not a city luncheon. That was a community luncheon. I want to thank Mr. King over at the middle school. He had a wonderful Black History Month program. He emceed part of the program. Ninety percent of that program was done by the Latinos. It was very few African-Americans and it was, it was well done. It was a wonderful job. February is not only Black History Month, as you know, it's our history month because black people would have never made it thus far if it wasn't for white folks and other people that was involved in that trip up north. February is also Chinese New Year's. Mr. King had a wonderful Chinese New Year program there. I attended it from the beginning to the end with family and friends as one of my daughters is Chinese, but I know more Mandarin than she does. She's not interested in learning, but she keeps up with the basics. The programs were both very uplifting. We always leave, talk about the bad things at the middle schools. I just wanted to bring up those two great points. It was a wonderful, diverse program. I also want to mention that I noticed how large the cafeterias are in these schools. So in case the M&amp;M building is not done, the cafeterias look like they can house quite a few people, especially that one in the middle school. That's just food for thought. The senior luncheon that we did have at the Logan Center, it was a box office hit. We sold those tickets out faster than the Black Panther movie. We really did. Those tickets went fast. We had a large Asian group, Chinese, Hong Kong, and Filipino people at this luncheon that we did have. About 20% were people from out of town because it was, it was billed as a community luncheon. There were two people as I walked around to each table to talk to the people. They were sitting there holding hands and tears coming down their eyes. And I asked, was there something wrong? They said they hadn't seen each other since childhood. So if it had been just a city event, they probably wouldn't have seen each other forever because it just happened to be one was from Teaneck and one was from Hackensack. So I thought that was a beautiful thing. There also was a woman there, 82 years old. She said that the senior luncheon was the best thing she has ever been to in her life. She was 82 years old, a church woman. So I thought that was a wonderful thing for her to say because I think we really did do a good job. The performers were excellent. They were heavenly. They were no less than Apollo, Apollo Theater creative members of that dance troupe, that Lori Manning handles. They did a great job. I want to thank Deputy Mayor Jamie Bland, NAN, the National Action Network, and the Iman from the Islamic Center who attended. It was not a political affair, and I'm sorry for the late notice, but I wasn't familiar with how to do those things. I do have three questions I'd like to ask. One for the city manager.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sharie, but your time is up. We have three minutes now.
Okay, can I just, can I just have these eight questions answered because it's very important? It looks like the Black History Luncheon was left out on the last city hall meeting on that bullet point you were showing. It showed the Thanksgiving and the St. Patches, but it didn't show Black History. I also want to know from...
I can't, Mrs., if I give you five minutes, I gotta give everybody five.
Okay.
If you have questions, you can submit them in writing to the city manager to be addressed if you'd like to do that.
Okay, so you'll let me know about that?
If you, if you give us the questions after the meeting, be happy to speak with you.
Okay, I will do. Thank you.
Next, please.
Rich Serbo, Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack. Again, I want to welcome the public and encourage them to participate. As you can see, our time has been limited here.
Mr. Serbo, please address the chair.
Mr. Serbo, you are again out of order. The city council's code of conduct requires you address the presiding officer of the body, that is the mayor. Please abide by the rules, like everybody else does.
Well, you seem to be the one that has a conflict with it. It's...
He's the council.
He's the council, okay. Well, let's talk, okay? Recently, this story about another payout to someone for accrued time. Now, I know the city manager just explained that we are sort of defenseless against it. Now, there must be a way out of it, okay? There has to be some kind of way out of it. And, I mean, we think everything else through. You think your project's through. So why not think that through and how we can get out of that and negotiate a little stronger with our public employee unions, okay? And that's, that's the tip of that. I mean, I mean, I asked you that in 2013. Were you gonna negotiate stronger with employee unions? And oh, sure, you said, yes, we will.
No, I didn't because I never, I don't negotiate with any unions. I don't negotiate with any employees, period. That's a city manager's job.
Okay, well, he's your city manager, though, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, so he, he negotiates for you. You, he works for you. He's your city manager.
True.
So, okay, so let's clear that up. All right, again, let's just, we're limited here, so please, I'm trying to get my, my, a few seconds here. Now, look, let's get back to the hospital, okay? What's, what's the update on that? What are they going to pay? How, how's the deal going? I know you're not allowed to be involved, John, but I'm sure Kathy, Kathy has something to say about it, like she usually does. So what is, what is the new deal with the hospital? Is there one? Are they gonna pay more taxes to our city to help us function here? Are they? Yes or no? What, are you gonna answer or you want to answer later?
I'll let you finish. I don't want to take your time and I'll answer you.
Okay, so the hospital is, is a concern of mine because, you know, it's, it's been a while. We've been talking about this for a couple of years now, at least. You know, the Morristown ruling that they're no longer nonprofit. They're, they're raking it in there. No one wants to address the mistakes being done there, of course. Everyone's afraid of that. But, but when it comes to taxes, they must be a profit, a for-profit status company now. They've merged with other healthcare companies, so they should be paying more into the city. How could that be through a minute? Are you serious? Look, we're censored here, of course we are. So I'm going to speak to the public whether I can or not.
Mr. Serbo, you're done. Thank you.
Whether Mr. Kleiman wants it or not, okay? He can talk in the back room.
Mr. Serbo, you're done, but the deputy mayor needs to answer your question, so...
Why can you talk in the back room and I can't speak here to the public?
Because this is the way a council meeting is run, all over the country, not just here. Sorry.
So it's Robert's Rules that, that rules the roost?
Pretty much. Mr. Serbo, thank you.
Mr. Serbo, I'll answer your question. We are still in negotiation with the Hackensack University Medical Center. When we have information that's public knowledge, we will be happy to share it with you. But just again, to refresh your memory, I know I've said this many times, that Hackensack University Medical Center is the second largest taxpayer in the City of Hackensack. So they do contribute to the tax base a certain fund, and we are in negotiation with them on other agreements that we will share when we have the ability to do so.
Thank you. Next, please.
Just for the record, I want to answer Mr. Serbo. When he says the city manager is responsible for negotiating these contracts, I have, since I've started here, negotiated every contract that the city has with its employees. That responsibility I take very seriously, and obviously not allowing this to expand past the 2% cap would be foolish and foolhardy by me. The mayor, council, have nothing to do with the contract negotiation. So Mr. Mangan, who stands over there, the personnel director and our labor attorney, we go through these processes, each one. These contracts, once they expire, the terms and the benefits that are identified in those contracts don't expire. Just how long the contract's gonna extend. So for me to walk in one day and say, à la King, all of those benefits go out the door because I say so, that's not how it works. So...
No one said that, though.
Sir, let me just speak, because I didn't interrupt you and your time is up already. So I'm just stating for the record publicly, like you like to with the public, is that the city, each time that we have a contract, we revisit all of those terms and all those benefits and we redefine them. And if you pay attention to these, there is a change in virtually every one of these agreements. And I don't say it's more. I'd have to be honest to say it's less. So you can't change the whole concept in one contract or one visit. Anytime that you want to speak to me, sidebar, I will be glad to outline what the changes have been because each year we go out and we look at the medical benefits and the cost and the contribution and the copay and all of these other pieces. Do we get into the full concept at a council meeting? No. For the same reasons Stephanie Mayor Canestrino cannot discuss the ongoing negotiations that I've been involved in since I started here with the hospital. But as you stated before, this has been an open issue for many, many years. It doesn't take six weeks or six minutes to close them. And that's my only response. Thank you.
So it sounds like a censored meeting, like I said. Well, it is.
That's not, that's not censored. Having, having negotiations privately are not censorship. That's the way, that's just the way it is.
And it's required under law as well.
Required by law. Before we start, I just wanted to bring up, I'm gonna go back to what we were talking about before with these payouts. Now, these were contractual payouts from years ago, all right? Now, my, and my question was, what would happen if we didn't pay them?
I mean, it's, it's a contractual obligation and we're not the only municipality in the state that is dealing with this issue. You know, we have made changes certainly on a going-forward basis to avoid these payouts in the future. But, you know, trying to change all this, it is like, you know, trying to steer the Titanic away from the iceberg. It's extremely challenging to do. These were decisions made 20, 25 years ago that employees counted on when they took these jobs. And so, you know, we are trying to change it. Municipalities across the state are trying to change it and there is progress being made, but it is a contractual agreement. If we break contracts, there are consequences to breaking contracts. And I'm not in the practice of, of taking actions and bringing cases that, that we don't think we're gonna win. And if we just simply walked away from our obligations, the result would not be good.
Okay.
But if I may add, on a go-forward basis, we have made change.
That's correct. Absolutely.
There were, there were a number of steps. One point where it couldn't exceed half of their last year's salary, and now I think it's got the $15,000 limit.
Yep.
So new employees now, when they retire, cannot receive more than $15,000 of this sick-time payout. So we have made change going forward, but you cannot affect contracts, as the council said, that were written 30 and 40 years ago. You cannot do that.
Okay, next.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Sal Meretti. I used to be at 390 Parks Street. We had people working with us who were living on Berry Street in the 40s. So to continue, incidentally, Paramus is looking to add a $750 million cancer hospital. And they're not, of course, it's going to come from Ridgewood and they're not going to pay a penny. What they're going to do is raise the money through financing. And of course, they don't pay any taxes at all, so it's an interesting corollary here. But with regard to the gentleman who stated that he was running for the education group, a prior speaker noted that out of 20,000 registered voters, 341 voted on the school budget in the last period. So I think we should have a little bit more input in that respect. But I understand the reticence in that regard. I know when I was in London, we used to have conferences with Arthur Kessler and James Baldwin, which I attended because of my relation to Hassan II and the development of Morocco and the Koran and my being in Asia and Africa and Europe during World War II. The issues were, of course, Kessler was imprisoned by Franco during the Spanish Civil War. He was originally Hungarian Jew, who is a well-known author. Darkness at Noon was one of his best-known books. James Baldwin, of course, was also the, a very interesting figure within the 1960s, 1970s period. And George Schultz attended the same school that I graduated from in Englewood. So there was sort of a confraternity of individuals. And when it came to my turn to be participating in the, in the educational system, they did not wish much of my input because of my, my background as being somewhat disputatious. Recalling back to FDR, when FDR was in his New Deal period in the Depression, he wanted to change the constituency of the Supreme Court. I appeared before the Supreme Court. The Chief Judge and William O. Douglas was on the court at that time. And I had mentioned to Douglas that he had participated in the removal of the Oliver Wendell Holmes Jr., who was the Civil War.
Thank you, Mr. Meretti. Your time is up.
Time's up. 3:13. Thank you.
Thank you.
3:13 seconds.
Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Frances Kajalja, 88 Katalpa Avenue. First and foremost, I want to echo all of your sentiments congratulating our student athletes, both the boys and the girls, as well as the Girl Scouts. Having a Hackensack alumni myself who played four sports in high school, I can certainly testify to the great advantages that the students have when they're also student athletes. So that being said, I just wanted to let the mayor and city council know and the, and the public know that as a former PTA president at Hiller Schools, at Hiller School, and an active PTA member at Fairmount School, I am stepping up to run for the Board of Education. And my main goal is to keep politics out of schools and support our teachers to help them get their jobs done. And as we all know, board members play a really important role in overseeing the proper functioning of our schools and also set policies that ultimately affect the well-being of our children. And unfortunately, that is not the case with our present board. So that is something that I and my running mates, Lance Powell, Carlos Velez, we are looking to remedy. So I just want to thank you for your time. And I really look forward to what we can achieve together when we put our kids first and we put politics aside. Thank you.
Thank you. Go on.
Thank you. Next, please.
Chris Coley, Prospect Ave. I have a question. It's going through, if it is not three, it's going to four years with Eric Anderson's beautiful mosaics on Main Street. I thought he was gonna be done with it. I thought he was gonna start construction on it. And again, I don't know any other town in the U.S. of A. that lets murals go around that fence. Number two, I was scared again, senseless, turning onto State Street. Now we're redoing Main Street. I hope this crew that is doing the overseeing of this conversion does not do such a poor job as they did on State Street with those streets. That should have been thought of, that should have been looked into, and it should have been solved before they even finished the conversions. Same thing with the meters and everything else. Now I came up Salem Street, I see they paved the, they striped the street. One side is right, one side is left. I'm old time. I didn't know you changed it. I went up the right side, tried to make a left, and almost got creamed by the guy trying to go left. Go right with me. Number two, why did the city allow those utility boxes for street poles that were made out of galvanized aluminum that does not rust and allow them to be what I call graffitied with all kinds of painting on them that's gonna now become a maintenance problem in years to go when you had a piece of, a metal box that was been there since time immemorial that cost you nothing to keep? But then, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my running mate, Frances, that the, the student athletes and the Girl Scouts, we commend them for a job well done. I was an athlete myself for many years, ran track, represented my country. So I, myself, feel good, you know, when we achieve something. So when our students could come here and, and we can celebrate them, it's a wonderful thing. Like the mayor said, it takes a village to raise a child. So with all of us supporting our kids, they can only continue to be successful. Thank you again for supporting our children and supporting our parents and our teachers and job well done to the city council. My name is Lance Powell. I live at 395 Golf Place, Hackensack. I've been living in Hackensack for quite a while now. I've been an educator for 23 years in elementary and proprietary schools. I have stepped up to the plate along with Carlos, Velez, and Frances to, there's an election coming up, April 17th, Hackensack School Board Election. I've decided to take the plunge with my running mates to run in this election. So we're here to let the people of Hackensack, the city council, and everyone know that we're here to represent our kids. And like Frances said again, we, we don't need politics in the school. Politics have no use in our school. We need a board that will work and be cohesive with parents. Parents have a voice. Without parents, kids cannot be successful. We also need a board that will work with the city council. We just need everyone working together to facilitate the, a good education for our kids. So that's what we represent. My decision to run for school board stems from my belief that our students deserve a board of ed that prioritize their education above everything else, above politics. And sadly, that has not been the case under the current board. Our students deserve better facilities, better education all around. All of our students deserve a pathway to being successful. Carlos, Frances, and I will work hard to ensure our schools are living up to that promise. And we do owe that to our kids. We need to go to the full extent, pull out all stops to make sure students get the best education that's possible in our community. Our kids come first. And in all that we do, it's not about us, it's about our kids. And our job is to make sure our kids get the best education possible in the City of Hackensack. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Carlos Velez and I reside at 20 Coles Avenue. Before I start, I just want to say thank you and congratulations to you guys for taking the time to honoring our students. Because when you honor our students, you honor our parents, you honor our members of our community. Because like you guys stated very clearly, it is not a handful of people that could do this. We work as a team, we work as a community to make sure that we're all successful. And for that, I want to say thank you to you guys. Like I said, my name is Carlos Velez and I am running for school board. I am an elementary school principal in the Bronx. I've been there for 16 years. I've dedicated 25 years of my life to work and support students, parents, and create and foster a professional learning community. And that's what I want to bring to our Hackensack school system. And that's what I want to bring to our Hackensack school system. Because I know what it takes to work as a team, to work together to create this kind of community. I'm a bit concerned that our leadership is not committed, is not willing, or is actually unable to lead our students, our parents, and our teachers in a direction of excellence so that we could create a system that truly prepares our kids to achieve higher in those high-stake tests. And most importantly, that they are prepared for college. And if they choose not to go to college, that they are able to be successful in the career that they choose. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Last but not least.
Last but not least, and council members. My, yes, okay, Zello Better?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Paul in Calcaterra, and I'm Broadway resident. I no longer complain about the Cultural Arts Center. So, but I just.
So you found something else? Come on!
Well, I don't want to say complain, I just want to say, I want to comment. It has been, it's been very nice now. My, my, my life is almost normal. And I want to thank Mr. Sims for helping me out all along the way. I wanted to comment on the traffic situation over there on Broadway at 10 to 9 till quarter after 9:00. And it was hell for a while. You know, those people, they just want to drop off the kids, leave the car. But they did have a patrol, patrol car there. I think they were H cops. And they walked a couple of times. And there was a young guy, I wish I, I was watching from the inside. There was a young guy there, looked like a little tough guy. And he, you know, pointing people around, "Don't do that." And then a couple of times, the horn went on. And I, it made a big difference because it showed the people who were coming there, "You better not do that or you're going to get a ticket." It's not all the time. He's, he hasn't been, he has not been there, I think, for the last few days. But whoever calls that person, whoever designates, you know, it's a, it's a real plus. I want to mention that to Mr. Ehrenberg. Maybe, you know, if you're involved with it or mention it to the police dispatch or whatever. So it's a real positive thing. Even if we just get it, you know, once or twice a week, it may set the pace for trying to make that area a little safer. The other thing, of course, you know, I'm, I'm a recycling kind of bug. And they moved the canister from the, what is it called, the, the school, the daycare school? What's the name of it?
ACDC. Early Childhood.
Early Childhood Development. They've moved it from one side to the, to another side, and I really can't help but seeing what they throw in there. Now, Sunday night, I get my recycling together, because I'm a recycling person, and the cardboards that were left thrown in that dumpster with garbage. It's really terrible. I think, you know, somebody has to address that to say, go around to the canisters. That's a, that's a multimillion-dollar contract that that school has. Recycling, you know, should become, you know, another way of life for us. Everybody wants to throw everything away, you know, plastics, everything, you know. I'm hoping that maybe I can trigger something to say, you call to the school or the recycling people.
See to it that the city manager gives them a shout.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe they do a little recycling in-service down there.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I also asked the city manager to find out, you know, it's H cop. And I know we had a discussion about, I know there's negotiations with, with the board right now on, on some type of protection for the students in the other schools, but I don't think this school was included in that. Was it?
It is.
It is? Oh, good. Beautiful. Never mind. Anybody else from the public? Seeing done, motion to close.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I know we spoke earlier about all the wonderful accomplishments, so I'm not going to discuss that, just congratulations to everybody. The library, the Johnson Library is actually running a program. It's been around for a little bit, but they haven't really gotten the word out. So I said I would say something about it tonight. It's a brick-by-brick program where you could buy a paver outside the library for, I think it was about $125, they said. You could honor someone or, you know, just put your family's name on there, a way to help them raise some funds. Or you could do a book where you buy a book for about $30 and put a plaque in the book with a note or someone's name. So that's just something to think about. They had a great turnout on Makers' Day in the Children's Department. For anyone not familiar with what Makers' Day is and Makers Labs, it's a new initiative for STEM products in the school, science, technology, engineering, and math. And there's new standards with the Common Core and the state to push those kind of things, and they really are important for our children to know. So they had a Makers' Day, and it was a big success at the library this past Saturday. And just piggybacking on that as well, Bergen County Technical Schools, they run an open Makers' Day night once a week. It's open to the public, you could go. They have different programs, TinkerCad and all these different STEM products for children and adults to play with. It's no charge, and it's really cool to see some of the technology and engineering aspects out there that our children aren't being exposed to. That was Bergen County Technical Schools on Hackensack Ave. Mr. Inclinera?
Incalter.
Incalter, I tried. I'm not, see, I'm not, not good tonight. Nice Italian name. I think it's Officer Gritkowski, another tough name. He's doing, and I had this note here before you even spoke, he's doing an excellent job. He goes, I see him at Parker, I drop off my grandson, I see my ACDC, I drop off Ben, and he's just wonderful. And I, you know, I meant to mention him last meeting. His wife actually is a teacher at ACDC, so, you know, just, they're a wonderful family, and he really is just trying his best to make sure everyone's safe. I think they're even handing out pamphlets about the, you know, car seat procedures and different requirements of buckling your children up, because you'd be surprised that some people roll up with a little kid in the front seat. So he, he really is taking this seriously, and it's nice to see that, and there is a difference when, when he's around. So I want to thank him for that. We had the Regions, the Wrestling Twin County Regions on February 25th on Sunday. It's a big event for Hackensack and the Junior Wrestling League. Big turnout, it went great, everything ran smoothly. And it was just a good time for all, and it's nice to have all different towns come into Hackensack and see everything going on. And we actually had a few people make comments about, you know, how great everything's looking and all the change and the redevelopment, and it's a nice way to get people in and see what we're doing here. Thank you to the DPW and the Police Department on the help they've done and the great work during the snowstorm. So it's been a tough month, but they did a great job. And thank you to Jim for all his hard work with everything, you know, and the city manager, they've done a lot with trying to do everything with the budget, and we all appreciate it a lot. And there's an art exhibit this Thursday, I think it's 6:00 PM at the Hack Pack for the students at the middle school and elementary school. Is it high school too, or no, just middle school?
I think the earlier ones are six to seven, and the older kids are seven.
Yeah, there's two sessions.
Okay, there's two sessions. But we saw some of the artwork, and it's just a nice way to, again, have the kids in the performing arts center. And that's it. It's a late night. Have a good night and be safe getting home.
Thanks, Steph. Again, so nice to honor Women's History Month here tonight and to see so many fine young women, you know, come up and be recognized. After the event, one of the young women came up that was honored for the basketball program and was telling me about her initiative, and she's actually starting up, or has been instrumental in starting up, the first crew team here in Hackensack. And go girl power! I mean, wonderful to be empowered and to have a sport you love and to see and bring new things into the city. So, you know, again, kudos to her and to everyone that supports that initiative going forward. A couple of things on the agenda tonight. We are purchasing two more garbage trucks as promised and also a fire rescue truck. You know, so again, moving forward with some infrastructure improvements and vehicles that needed to be purchased for the city. There's a few things on here about the development of Lot C that's very important. We've talked about this a number of times, you know, we're looking at about 377 apartments down in the Lot C area. That's the parking lot there by Bowler City and the Ice House. And that will be a pilot agreement, and we're looking at year one. I mean, right now, that property is non-taxable. In year one, the pilot is estimated to be about $1 million coming into the city in revenue. So that's a great project. Thanks to Jim and the city manager and the whole financial staff. I mean, our financials are looking better than ever. I know that the CFO is out looking at updating our credit rating, and, you know, part of that was evident tonight in the two bond sales, the combinations of doing the right thing for the city. The city's in so much better financial shape than it has been four or five years ago, and we just continue to do it better and better. And again, the whole staff needs to be thanked for that. In advance, I'm wearing my green. Happy St. Patty's Day, everyone. I am half Irish, so I have to get my green in and honor my dad. So I hope everyone has their corned beef and cabbage this weekend and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Hackensack Recreation Baseball, this is the last week to sign up. Hackensack Youth Basketball, this is their last week of playing basketball. As our city manager said, our Easter egg hunt will be March 28th. I want to close by saying congratulations to both boys and girls team. I am a Comet, and I believe blue and gold. Good night.
Thank you, Dave. Leo?
I hope so we can have council meetings all the time, the way we got it today. Recognize all the kids, the coaches for the wonderful job they are doing. Thank you to Jean and Ted for working on the budget. And I know that you guys probably really have to squeeze the numbers. And no question that the presence of the police around the schools helps a lot, you know, because some part of it, no understand that when they got a double parking and sometimes triple parking, the kids are crossing between cars. And one of these days, if this continues, we're going to have a tragedy in our hands. They have to try to listen to the police officers, and even if the police officers don't show up, at least they should be remembered that the only way the kids are going to be safe is we obey the law. They have to try to stay away from the double parking because the kids are crossing the street between cars, and it's no way that sometime a driver can react so quick to try to prevent accidents. The other day, when we tech, a teacher passed in front of us, and then she returned to her car and then come back again. She never noticed that we were coming, right? So people on the phones, people listening music, sometimes talking, they have to pay more attention. And the other problem that we had, the speeding, the speeding continued in some areas of the city. Rose Avenue, Fairmont Avenue, including Grand Avenue. You know, we got kids coming to school and people driving sometime 40 miles an hour. So I, my suggestion about long time was to go for what they call table bumps. Speed bump is too high. The table bump, at least, they force you to reduce your speed. If the guy don't want to listen, we have to go to another solution because that continue. And in question that DPW did a wonderful job in the last storm. I thank them today, and thank you to everybody for coming.
Thank you. Yes, see, our DPW did do a good job. I had a lot of compliments on the streets this time. So, and it was a tough snowstorm. That snow was pretty heavy, came down pretty quick, and storm reisters are dangerous. I want to give kudos to all our student athletes and our Girl Scouts tonight. Really nice having everybody here. Kudos to all the women out there, it's your month. Good for you guys. Earlier, I'd stated at the earlier meeting, yesterday, I spent some time up in Westwood to sit guest to Mayor John Burkner with Congressman Gottheimer, who's running a program, a 1033 program it's called, which is a way for municipalities to get some of their money back out of Washington. In today's world, it's hard to get money out of these guys, and New Jersey pays way more than its fair share. In fact, New Jersey, for every dollar we spend, we get 33 cents back when a state like Mississippi, for every dollar they spend, they get $4.38 back. And that's why Mississippi and states like Louisiana are now called moocher states. They're, for no unforeseen reason, they're reaping all these huge benefits out of, out of Washington. And even at the same time, you know, the new, the new tax plan that's been put out through Washington is helping states like Mississippi and helping states like Louisiana, who are already benefiting greatly off the dollars from other states, and it kills states like ours. So I give Congressman Gottheimer a lot of credit. It gives us the opportunity to attain equipment, government surplus items like that. We've been using it even before he got in, but he's been really pushing it. Over the last several years, Hackensack has reaped a benefit of $1.4 million in equipment and items that we have now in our possession that we would have had to pay for. These are items we needed. So therefore, that's like, you know, not having to go into the taxpayer's pocket in order to buy these things. It's a great program, and it's really greatly appreciated, so kudos to him. I'm pretty sure all our insurance issues have been solved with all our junior sports teams. There's always, you know, trying to straighten it out, but it looks like we have that pretty much cleaned up. Again, Thursday, the art show at 6:00. Get down there, not just to see the art, but also if you haven't seen our new Cultural Arts Center, the gallery and the theater, it's a great opportunity to go see it and see some great artwork by our young people. You saw some of our young people tonight here. You can see some more on Thursday night. That'll be a nice event. Also, you know, the Hack Pack is serving a lot of different purposes. You know, we had our, our Pack the House series, which I think there's one event left, and most of them have been sold out and have done very well. We've had other great shows there. I've been to a play there, had a nice showing there. Hamilton was sold out, or Hamilton, not Hamilton, Hamilton's was sold out. We've had a couple comedy nights, doing really well. But this year, the school play is going to be done in the Hack Pack, in the theater. I made sure I got my tickets online. So, and it's, you know, it's not a big venue, it's 220 seats. But it's a beautiful venue for a play like this for high school students, and it's going to be exciting for them. And we're very happy that the students will be able to utilize this facility and have, have a little bit of a theater atmosphere to it. Looking forward to seeing the play. It's Cabaret this year. Just for the, so everybody knows, it's got like a, it's like going to a PG-13 movie, so make sure you know that. But looking forward to it. I've always enjoyed the school plays. My son was the lead in the school play, and it was, I never knew he had it in him, because he was, he never really acted before. But he was injured and couldn't do sports that year, and he got talked into doing the school play and ended up getting the lead. When I went to see him, I was blown away because I'd never seen, seen him do anything like that. So it, it's great for the kids, what, what these kids get out of it, what the parents get out of seeing their kids doing. It's a great atmosphere. Paul, we'll work on that recycling issue. It's probably just something that needs to be tweaked, and some people maybe need a little in-service on that. What else happened tonight? A little lot happening. Can't believe we're still getting there at 10:00. That's not too bad. State Street, Chris, where are you? Need more specifics tonight. I know Salem's a little bit of an issue. Do utility boxes? You know, that was a joint effort that was part of, Albert, what group did that?
It was a creative art team, Hackensack.
Right, the cat team.
There were a number of groups that were involved.
Right, and we had a lot of good stuff about it and some bad stuff about it. You know what? This is a learning thing. But those things, are they painted? Yes, they'll probably be painted again, maybe with something a little different in the future. It's, you know, it's not going to stay with, you know, I don't like the animated stuff myself, but I'd like to see some nice artwork on those things. That's just my, my taste in art. But I'd like to see something more related to Hackensack itself, maybe some of the iconic buildings, like pictures of the library or stuff like that on there. But that's all part of the art movement we're doing in Hackensack to try to bring art in. Don't be surprised if you see some street painting down the road and some other murals around. I can't answer as far as what's going on with his building, because he's moved his fence back. I think he's in compliance as far as everything goes. He's not blocking any sidewalks, he's filled all the holes, so he's, he's, he's legit right now as far as that goes. And that's it. I want to thank everybody for coming. It's been a pleasure tonight, and get home safe. Thanks, everybody. Need a motion to close the meeting? What? I thought you said something else. Motion to close.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody get home safe. Thanks.